Will the January 14th Dune City Council meeting please come to order? It is seven o'clock PM. Would everyone present, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you everyone. This administrator, could we please have a roll call?
Yes. Mayor Reedy.
Present.
Councillor President, Marie Sanders.
Here.
Councillor Ed Scarborough.
Here.
Councillor Duke Wells.
Here.
Councillor Sheldon Meyer.
Present.
And Councillor Kinplatt is absent and excused.
Thank you ma'am. Councillors, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve tonight's agenda. Any discussion? And then I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Councillors, I'll entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve tonight's consent agenda. Any discussion? And then I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Alright, moving on. Announcements, even though we have some very fine committee appointments this evening, we still have many voluntary openings, various commissions and committees. And please call City Hall. And I just want to give a heartwarming thanks to our city administrator interim, Jamie Mills, for sending out that letter to our citizens. It has really generated a lot of interest in committees. And I really think we can credit, you know, some of these appointments this evening and interest to that letter, because it was just very specific. It went to every home, every home, every resident. And I, for one, have been getting a lot of feedback, so. Job, lovely.
Thank you.
Birthday wishes this evening to Road Secretary, Loryelle Lorenzen. Happy birthday. And Councillor Ed Scarborough. So we're having cake in your honor. Tonight, after the meeting, if you guys can stay with us, you're certainly welcome to participate. Just go lunchroom and have cake. It's chocolate with chocolate.
I saw it there.
And blueberry filling.
Oh. So, everyone's welcome. Okay, here's an announcement. The Dune City Goal Setting Work Session was scheduled for January 28th, from 2:30 to 4:30. And I have multiple conflicts on that date. So could we please discuss at this point right now, a mutually agreeable date? The following Thursday?
I'm trying to think. Any time should be good for me.
Is it Duke?
Yeah, any day.
What day is on Thursday?
It's February 4th.
Oh. Can't do 4th. I'm so sorry.
I had to ask.
You did. Okay, how about the Wednesday?
Before or after?
The Wednesday before, the very next Wednesday.
Oh, the next Wednesday.
Well, no, the 3rd?
That would be the 3rd.
Would the 3rd work? Ed?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah?
I think I have to have to move it.
Okay, so that week, would that week, can we agree on that, maybe that week?
I know the 1st and 2nd are good.
Okay. Don't want to take up any more time with this, but.
Let's do the, let's go and do the 3rd. I can, I know I can change my order.
Oh, okay, the 3rd.
At 2:30 again?
Two, 2:30 to 4:30? 2:30 to 4:30?
Yep.
Thank you, thank you all.
Can we get emails on that?
Absolutely. And phone calls if you'd like.
Emails fine.
Anyone would like a phone call? Councillor Wells would like a phone call? Okay. Thank you. And unfortunately, it's, it's something that can't be avoided, schedule in conflict with my place of business. Okay. Citizen input, do we have anyone sign for citizen input this evening?
Not general input, but we do have those who wish to speak to the ordinance when we call.
Very good, very good. Alright. Moving on to Agenda Item Number 8, New Business, Ordinance 232, Adding the Authority to Find for Code Violations. This is a first reading, public hearing, public hearing on Ordinance 232. Want to hand it over? Just for everyone's knowledge, a proposed ordinance requires two readings before it can be enacted. Our City Charter, Section 34.3, provides that both readings may be read by title only. If no councillor were present at the meeting, request it to be read in full. Or if a copy of the ordinance is provided for each member and all requirements for posting and advertisement have been met. Ms. Mills, have all postings and advertisements requirements been met?
Yes.
Yes, they have. Does any councillor desire the ordinance to be read in full? Hearing none. I will entertain a motion to read the ordinance by title only.
So moved.
It's been moved in second that we read the ordinance by title only. Ordinance 232 and Ordinance Amending Title 3, Chapter 36 of the Dune City Code entitled Code Enforcement: Repealing and Replacing Section 36.070, thereof, to include fines, adding a new section, 36.95, entitled Fines Assessment and Lean and other matters relating thereto. I will now open this Agenda Item for public comment at 7:06.
Are we going to have a vote on the motion?
We're gonna have. Well, we'll, could I vote on the motion first?
You were supposed to vote on the motion before you read it.
It's been moved in second, if there's votes, you have them, then. Oh, I beg your pardon, councillor. It's been moved in second that we read this ordinance by title only. Thank you. That's why we have all of us here. Okay, so, any discussion? Discussion? No? Alright, hearing none. I'll call for the question. Any, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay, we will reread the ordinance by title only. Ordinance Number 232 and Ordinance Amending Title 3, Chapter 36 of the Dune City Code entitled Code Enforcement: Repealing and Replacing Section 36.070, thereof, to include fines, adding a new section, 36.95, entitled Fines Assessment and Lean and other matters relating thereto. Okay? Sound good? Alright, I will now open this Agenda Item for public comment at 7:07. Alright. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment on this ordinance, either for or against? Here it is.
We have a new form, mayor, let me explain it. When they sign in to speak for an ordinance, they indicate whether they're for or against, so that you will know from the signing sheet.
Oh, very nice. Thank you. I will call Ms. Bonnie Allen to the microphone, please. Do I state whether they're for or against? They state, you can state that.
It's on the form.
It's on the form?
And I will state it. I am for this. That Dune City, I have seen, goes to a lot of work to write excellent code. It considers the opinions of the citizenry. It looks at what other cities and locales are doing and does its best to write good code. This is analogous to our highway system, where we have signs posted, recommended speed limits on our roads. On our roads, we also have an enforcement mechanism. And in our city, we have an enforcement mechanism. But what we do not have in our city is a way to have people pay if they violate the rules. And I believe, if I understand this correctly, this is what this ordinance would do. It would set place what I feel to be a very fair and much-needed enforcement mechanism for the city.
Thank you, Ms. Allen, I appreciate that. Is there any others in the audience that would like to comment on this ordinance? I'm gonna make sure this thing doesn't hear me talking and do something. It's on mute. So sorry.
Your person's talking.
Oh, I don't know how to stop that. Okay. Nobody else wants to talk about this? Okay. I guess I'll close the public hearing then. It is 7:12. And councillors, I entertain motions to change the language if you've had a chance to review it. Now, this is the time where we would amend it.
The language to the ordinance. So we can talk about the ordinance.
We wouldn't talk, yes. Talk about ordinance.
I want to clear on one section.
Which section would that be, sir?
Under 36.195. It talks about the code enforcement officer under E shall forward a notice of impositional penalty to the property owner or the person responsible stating the amount of any penalty for violation of the code. And the code says, shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $500. Is it the intent of this ordinance that the code enforcement officer will be able to say what the amount of the penalty shall be that will be assessed? Whether it be $1 or $500 for offense? Or are we going to statutorily put limits on it, or what?
Well, I interpret it, okay.
Yes, it would leave the decision up to the code enforcement officer if the code is silent. A lot of times, there are provisions in other sections of the code that specifically states what the fine would be or what the penalty for violation would be. So this is just with regard to those sections where the code is silent, otherwise silent.
Okay, so if the code says that can be punished up to $500 a day, you have a spectrum of $1 to $500 to choose from and you can choose anywhere in there.
Right.
Based upon your judgment.
Right.
Just wanted to make that clear.
Very good, thank you, very good question. Councillor Wells?
Fines in the same area, this is what I feel about that. I, I, I'm for this overall, it's that area of the fine that I'm concerned about. The community that we live in is so small. We know each other, we see each other all the time. I don't think there's, I don't think we need to be that quick on setting the fine by a code enforcement officer. I think we have time to bring it in front of the council. And I think the council should have a look at this before a fine amount is set.
You're ready?
Yes, Councillor Sanders.
I would, I understand what Councillor Wells is saying. I would, if the City Council would be the arbiter in an appeal, we cannot be a precipitant participant into setting a fines or anything. And I think that would be problematic.
Okay, I would, I didn't understand that. I do see the repeal part in here. As long as we still have a say-so before this is, you know, goes to.
If we are the.
Lake County.
If we are the body where appeals are sent to, we can't participate in saying how much the fine is. That's why I asked the question.
Yeah, okay. That's where mine, that's where, I just, so there's some, you know, the appeal chances in there where we can be the final say on the amount of fine.
Right. Now, I also would like a clarification from staff regarding the, the way this is worded. It reads 500, let's see. Any, let's just read the whole thing. We're reading on page 2 of 3, Section A, under Fine Assessment and Lean. Any person found to be in violation of any section or provision of this city code where no other penalty is set forth shall be punished by a fine not to exceed $500 for any one offense, each day constituting a separate offense. So that means each day they are in violation. Is that right?
That's correct. Do you understand, though, that there is a long process ahead of time? Where we notify them of the, first of all, we send them a courtesy notice and advise them of what the code states. And secondly, then we send a more forceful letter that says you have a certain period of time within which to correct the violation. So they've got a long time going before that final letter that gets sent certified that with the order from the code enforcement officer that says, correct it. Well, since you have not corrected it, then the fine would be kicked in at that point. But it's before that, before it actually kicks in, we are obligated to notify them of what those fines would be or could be ahead before they are implemented.
Thank you, thank you.
If I could follow up with that. So at the point where the code enforcement officer says, on January 14th, 2016, you will be found in violation, your fine will be $500 per day.
Or could be.
Well, no, I'm assuming that the code enforcement officer would tell them that.
When the, when the order is entered. When the filings and order are entered, yes.
Yep. At some point, then it will be clock is ticking on that day. Okay, what does the clock stop ticking?
When they correct it. Whatever the violation is.
So when would the city assess a lien? Every, every month they would update the lien?
No, because that'd be too expensive. We would have to work that out in the city, depending on the, on the situation. I myself don't see anybody actually doing that. But. In the, I know, I know, never say never. But then, I mean, it would not be cost-effective to do it all the time. Of course, when you do get the lien, we, you know, we have to go to the court to get the lien. And when we do get the lien, we can ask the court to impose additional interest or additional penalties. And the court can order so many, so much money a day, depending on what is requested of the court. The hope is, it never comes to that.
I know, but here's the thing. It could, because we've seen stuff happen here in our tenure. And this is something that, in my opinion, it just seems punitive to assess a $500 a day, per day penalty. Does anybody else follow? I mean, I do, it's my understanding, after reading through this, that it's, we've gone to exhaustive efforts to get the folks in compliance and let them know that they're in violation and help them, I don't know, helping them figure out a remedy, but insisting that they remedy this by a certain day. And this is like the drop dead day. If you don't do it by the drop dead day, you're gonna be fined $500 a day that you're in non-compliance.
Up to $500.
Up to $500.
It says shall be punished.
They buy a fine not to exceed.
Yeah, and an amount not to exceed. I can't go higher than $500. But I can go anywhere up to $500 a day.
Y'all go with this?
But you can, I mean, if you feel that way.
No, I've tried.
Change it. That's why you're discussing.
Talking about this.
I, I would assume there would be some negotiation between the code enforcement officer and the violator to work out some, something that would be done in the interim to.
Which is what we did when we adopted the code enforcement ordinance before, is allowed for that negotiation, to enter into cooperative agreements, to do, you know, to negotiate settlement.
Yeah, as long as that's in place, I have no problem.
I, I'm good with that. About you, Councillor Meyer?
Yeah.
Councillor Wells?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Alright, where are we now? Okay, so we've decided we're gonna, we're all good with all this. I'll now entertain a motion to have a second reading of Ordinance 232 by title only, as presented. We, we need a motion for a second reading of Ordinance 232 by title only.
So moved. Second.
It's been moved in second that we read Ordinance 232 by title only. And I will read it again for the third time. Ordinance Number 232 and Ordinance Amending Title 3, Chapter 36 of the Dune City Code entitled Code Enforcement: Repealing and Replacing Section 36.070, thereof, to include fines, adding a new section, 36.95, entitled Fines Assessment and Lean and other matters relating thereto. Okay, I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for Ordinance 232 as presented. Wait, do we need to vote on that one?
Yes. I'm sorry, I left out the voting part. I'll be sure and change the script. I tried. At least you got the amendment part in there. I was left out before.
Okay, I know, this is true. Alright, so there's a motion on the floor that we read title, that we read Ordinance 232 for the second time by title only. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. Do we need one more, Jamie?
Well, now you need the final motion for approval. That's where it says start second motion.
I will now entertain a motion to accept the wording for Ordinance 232 as presented.
There it is. I will let the council adopt Ordinance Number 232 as presented.
Second.
Is there, okay, there's a second. Any further discussion, councillors? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The last we go.
Alright, well, we're gonna vote by roll call, starting with Councillor Meyer.
Aye.
Councillor what?
Aye.
Councillor Sanders?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes. Ordinance 232. Okay.
I will amend your script.
Thanks. Thank you, Jamie. Okay, we have a resolution now. We have another.
I don't know, I'm gonna.
Okay. This is our very first resolution of the year, of the new year. Resolution Series 2016, Number 1, dated 1/14/16. A resolution approving a combination driveway access and driveway permit application form to simplify the information required and fees charged. I think this is kind of like a housekeeping-type resolution for us to consolidate processes and make it more convenient for citizens. Alright, I'll now open this Agenda Item for public comment. It is 7:24. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to comment regarding the resolution? No? Okay.
Do the councillors have any questions?
Councillors, do you have any questions? Councillor Sanders?
On the current driveway access and current driveway permit, they have diagrams on the back to show the applicant what is exactly needed. The form they have in this package doesn't have that.
No, I know, we're still trying to determine which diagram. What we've discovered is that the diagram on the back was not the same on all of them. And so we're, we're going, but yes, we will be including that on the back. It is an informational thing, not actually just part of the form.
Okay, so this is not an actual copy of the permit?
No, no, that diagram will be on the back. As will, we have another form that they give out too, with instructions and requirements.
Yeah, I'm familiar, I just want the people to know what their requirements are. Okay.
Well, I told them this is the form on the back.
That's, that's because I, Road Commission Chair had to deal with this form.
Right, he's been there, done that.
Okay, because there's no form on the back of orange, right?
No.
Okay, thanks, I thought about.
But there will be on the form that gets.
Okay, alright. Any other questions, councillors?
Sorry.
Give me the hot right there. Okay. I'll now close this public hearing. It is 7:26. Two minutes. Councillors, I will now entertain a motion to amend the language of the proposed resolution. Any? Okay. Guess not. I'll now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Series 26. Wait. Jamie, this. It's not Series 2016, it's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, alright, so I'll now entertain a motion to adopt Resolution Series 2, 2016, Number 1, dated 1/14/16.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt this resolution. Any discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. That's moved on to. Okay, let's see. Checking these off. On Agenda Item C, under New Business, is a set aside letter regarding Montgomery roadway request. And this is a discussion action item. Ms. Mills, do you want to throw this in on this?
Well, I'm not real up on it, but I know that there is a description of the situation. And, there it is. It has, it has to do with, it has to do with installation of the roadways. This time of year, it is more expensive and more difficult to do and less likely, and they will not guarantee it because of the weather. And so what Mr. Montgomery is requesting is that this part be set aside. He will post bond to ensure that the action gets taken care of, to wait and put the roads in when the weather is better and they will be guaranteed. And so he's requesting approval by the City Council to do that.
Have, has all the councillors had a chance to read through this? It's quite a lot of good savings for him to do that.
And while people saving money.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure if there's gonna be a window between now and spring anyway, when you could, want to take a chance and put some payment down.
Right. No, that's why the bidding company just said they're not gonna guarantee this because it's so nasty. So do, Councillor Sanders, do you have a question?
First of all, is it the intent of Montgomery to have this, these roads become public roadways?
I don't know, I'm sorry, I don't know.
My second question.
Okay.
My second question would be, do these meet with the approval of the city engineer with these bids that they will meet city specs for roads to be adopted into the city?
That, I do, yes.
Okay, are they?
Yes.
Okay. Is there currently any damage to city roadways by these unfinished roads?
At this point in time?
Yeah, has it been any damage to any city roads?
No.
Okay. And the permit that expires January 29th of this year, when was it issued?
Well, it expires January 29th, 120 days before that, but they have filed for an extension.
Montgomery did?
Yes.
Okay.
They're allowed to do that.
No, they have done it.
Alright. As long as they're willing to meet city specs with this, I will care.
So do we need a motion to allow this set aside?
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to allow this set aside by Mr. Montgomery.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we allow this set aside by Mr. Montgomery. Any just, any further discussion, councillors? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Okay. And you will take care of the logistics for him? The logistics of these things happen, make sure he's got his. We're seeing activity, that's great. Okay, request to install pipe on roadway by Fish. Agenda Item number D under New Business is request to install pipe on roadway from Fish Mill Lodge.
If I may clarify, that is a typo on the agenda. It is request to install pipe under roadways by Fish Mill Lodge. Do you want to speak to it?
Can we? We have a request to cut into our newly.
Newly paved roads.
Newly paved roads out there to allow someone to cut into the roadway. I think it's three different locations to bring water from the spring at Summit and Maple down to Fish Mill Lodge. That's the request. Whenever you cut into a roadway, you can. And ultimately, it'll be a problem that we will have to deal with as a city, as we have with most other cuts in the roadway that we've had. It is always better, in my opinion, to have people bore under the roadway and not cut into our pavement because it weakens it. That is very expensive for the person to do, but it assures the city we will not be paying additional maintenance cost on cuts in the roads. Currently, we have in the past as a city approved cuts in the roadway without, just without question. But we paid the piper having to go in and just do repairs. And three years ago, four years ago, there were, there were several, and some of the most recent were out in Woodland. There is no incentive to have applicants bore under the roadway. And if this council said if you want to cut into the roadway, the fee would be fifteen hundred dollars to do it. If you bore under the road, it's a fifty dollar fee, that might be incentive enough. However, the request is, is as it is, it's a request to do as we've done before, except now we're going to be cutting into three sections of newly paved road. And I for one, I know what went into keeping these roads up, but I'm not too thrilled about that at all.
So.
Is that a free assessment?
Except that the council does have the option to put a condition on the request, on the approval to do, the permit to use the easement, to require that it be bored rather than cut. So you have that option to, to consider.
I see two issues. One is a policy issue of the council, the other one is to deal with the specific at hand.
Exactly.
And the only thing that's agendaized is the issue at hand.
Would it be appropriate to send this subject to the Road Commission to make a recommendation to the council?
I thought it had already been discussed at the Road, it has not been discussed at the Road Commission level. Um, I would prefer, I mean, there, the property, the quester, the applicant, is anxious to get their water source hooked up. And we, as staff, are just concerned that we don't want to have to repave all those roads. And so the decision of the council to, on that issue, do we allow them to cut or do we, or do we require them to bore, is right now the greatest issue at hand. And of course, I can always get instruction from the council to prepare language for the issue that Councilor Sanders is discussing for future consideration.
But right now, we don't have, or we do have precedent regarding this.
We've been allowing people to cut into the roadway utilities, and that's been a problem.
Yeah, it's kind of a problem. So is, this is not their primary water source?
It will be their primary water source, replacing.
Currently, their primary water source.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what their water source is right now.
Councilor Scarborough?
The, the need for three cuts instead of one, we know that. It's coming from one spring.
It's coming from a spring in Lane County down the roads and has to cut across a couple of roads in order to get to the final destination.
Because the road curves?
Because the roads, yes.
Intersect.
They cross, intersect and cross.
And we just paved it?
And we just paved it.
I, I too have concerns about cutting into the nice road because you can see lots of examples of that in City Florence and Lane County on Highway one-on-one. And once you make a cut, I don't care what you do, it, it doesn't hold up.
It weakens it.
Why is it dipity group?
It comes the lower area, and you notice it every time you drive across it, and sooner or later, they'll be there digging it out, fixing it, because somehow water has penetrated in there and made a little sinkhole.
What's the pleasure of the council?
Well, to me, it sounds like we kind of got a recommendation from the Road Committee.
Why, yeah.
He's the boss, you know, I mean, of course, you have other members, but Councilor Sanders has been, you know, running our roads for quite a while now, has done an excellent job, so I have to really pay attention to what he thinks on this.
I agree.
As, as far as boring, I've never had, I've been boring, but I've never had the experience to actually bore under a road. But with a water line, it's going to be, what, two inches or less? And so the boring would be a lot less dramatic than like when you see the highway department out there putting in an eight or nine inch line, and they've got a huge machine set up.
That's a very good point, Councilor.
If, if you're just going to run a, you know, a one inch water line, then they probably put a two inch hole in there. It might not be as dramatic as you expect.
Okay, let's hear a motion. We're ready.
I'd like to make a motion that the council require the applicant to bore under the roadway to lay their water line.
Okay, there's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
The move in second is that we require the applicant to bore under the roadway. Any, any further discussion? Sort of talked about it, alright. Alright, hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. That motion carries.
I'm reading.
Please notify the council.
Is it possible that we can place this on an agenda for a policy discussion? So future applicants will know and not be having to do this?
Great idea. When would you like to enter that? Next month?
Sure.
February.
We're going to talk about it at the Road Commission meeting next year.
It's on your agenda? Very good, thank you, Councilor. Can I say this more clearly? Yes? Okay, um. Okay, so, advertising, hiring, uh, a, a city recorder, as everyone knows, Jamie Mills is our acting city administrator recorder. And, um, it's down January, and we, you know, it's time, or I'd like to hear some discussion on, um, advertising for the position. Jamie, do you want to say anything?
The only thing I would say is I would just remind the council that you did say for me to act until, after the first of the year, and then you would decide what to do then. So, it's time, after the first of the year.
Okay. So, advertising means we just put an ad somewhere?
Put it in the paper.
And accept applications and put a deadline on that, and, um.
Have an interview process.
Interview, interview process.
You may wish to appoint a smaller committee. However, it is a selection by the entire council, so, however you wish to do it.
Okay. What do we think, thirty day, thirty day? Advertise for thirty days, accept applications for thirty days?
What standard?
I don't know. I don't know.
Thirty to forty-five days shouldn't be a lot of time.
I don't think sufficient. Okay. And after the deadline, after that closes, we'll, I'll let any council member wanting to compose an ad hoc committee to interview candidates or go through a selection process for candidates to, um, let everybody know, and if you want to help me find, I'll require some help, we would need some help on this, yes. So how's that sound?
So we're asking the city administrator to post a job vacancy announcement for city administrator for the city of Doom City, starting immediately, and to end the application process in thirty days? Or two, three weeks, or what?
Thirty, thirty through forty-five days, thirty.
Would you prefer forty-five? I mean, either way is fine with me, so.
I would prefer thirty days, and we can take two weeks, and we can have an idea of what we're going to.
Look at?
Yeah.
Okay.
I have a question too, Melton, um. Do we want to stay with a city manager versus a city recorder? I mean, it wasn't that long ago that we were at the recorder stage, and then we did a change in title for a couple of different reasons, city manager. And I think that's one thing we need to discuss. You know, and the way the job is going to be set up, responsibilities, uh, maybe with different responsibilities, the title could go back to city recorder.
Mary?
Yes.
The job descriptions are treated as if they are two separate people, even though they need not be. Um, what I can do is, I recently looked at the old position description and asked each of office, each of the, each of the office staff to go through and change or add or move or correct and what. And then I also added some stuff to it. And so we now have a city administrator position job description, a city recorder job description. And if the administrator is hired as administrator, they are also to serve, at this point in time, is assumed they are also to serve as the city recorder, instead of two separate. But it's still set up as, it could be two separate if the city ever needs it.
Okay.
And then the other thing to discuss is.
Yes, the city, I'm sorry, city, the charter does require the city recorder.
Then the other thing to discuss are wages and benefits and things like that.
So what I hear you saying is that we probably should have a work session about this before we solicit applicants.
We would need that real soon, since we want to get an advertisement out there.
That, that.
I mean, it's kind of hard to put an advertisement out there if you don't know exactly what it is you're offering.
Right, right.
So we probably need to discuss something.
Good. So we'll have a, a work session?
See, I see it differently. We know that we want a city administrator, someone to be responsible and supervise the day-to-day operations in the city. We know that.
Right. Our charter requires a recorder, and so if we advertise and get only an administrator, they would have to be administrator slash city recorder because our charter requires.
Sorry, I don't know what a work session would produce, because we already know what the need is. I just see it differently.
Okay, well, that's why we're here to talk about it. We can talk about it right now, too.
I think the position was city recorder slash city administrator, and that's what Jamie has stepped into to do. I think that's what we're looking to fill. Recorder slash administrator.
Yeah, you know, um, one thing that we've, one change that we are now doing is, our current city administrator is being paid hourly. And, um, that is saving us a lot of money. And at, at her request, I mean, that's your request, so could you maybe elaborate on the way Oregon looks at that, Oregon law?
What the position, I am filling the position as a contractor, as a consultant, if you will. So my contract is an hourly contract for hours when I'm in the office. I assume all responsibility for all payroll, you know, taxes and, and that sort of thing. There's no requirement for medical insurance. And it has been cleared through Pers. They understand, and they said that's fine. Um, it's not a requirement if you're a consultant. I think a work session is in order, because that's the discussion that needs to occur. Does your recorder have to be a full-time employee employee in that position as a Pers employee? Or can you have, can you pay somebody to be the contract employee to do that position? Um, and I don't know the answer to that question. We may require consulting with legal counsel.
Legal counsel and perhaps the board of cities.
Right, see what other options may be out there. This is not a diff, it's not an unusual question for small cities. All, small cities across the state, as we heard last year at the legislative meeting, are suffering the same situation, especially now that Pers has gone out and pretty much indicated that you're looking at a double, doubling the amount, the cost to the city for the coming year. Um, for their, the city contribution, which will make it even more difficult for small cities to meet that obligation. So, um, I'm thinking that maybe this matter, there's no urgency here, I'm not going anywhere. Um, and yet, like you say, if I don't have any work to do that isn't, you know, pressing, it has to be done, I'm not here. I'm not charging you. And so we're also catching up the budget and, and the finances at the same time. So I say, when you can schedule the earliest convenient time to get together and discuss it and make some of these tough decisions, talk to the legal counsel, I would recommend that that's what you do. But if you guys see differently, of course. I'll do what you say.
Could I ask for a question?
Oh, yeah, you say.
How many hours, how many hours are you putting in a week?
Well, right now, um, you can figure about seven hours a day, so twenty-eight, and if the mayor would quit calling me on Friday. No, so yeah, right around twenty-eight to thirty hours a week.
Do you think that can get properly done without a forty-hour week?
Most definitely. Most definitely.
That's a good point.
That's very good point.
Big point.
I, yeah, I look at her hours and sign her paycheck, and it's a pretty very, very incredible, I think. She does a lot of work.
It isn't that hard.
It's not that, yes.
Interesting.
Interesting, so I'm, I'm looking at, um, late, possibly mid to late February on a work session. Are you guys okay with that?
Whatever, yeah.
We might be able to get it done. We'll see in the end, but our goal session is before, and that's going to be a pretty lengthy, uh, third. Sorry. And, uh, maybe we'll agendaize that to have a brief discussion on what our goal would be. For our, our goal for a big session.
So that's something.
So what, what do we do with this?
The third.
No, the third from the city administrative position too?
No, we're just going to briefly discuss it.
To set a date, most likely.
Probably set a date on that agenda on the third. Everybody okay with that? Kind of keeps us up to speed on that? Okay, committee appointments, um. There is, let's see, well, we need to, okay, advertising for a city council vacancy. I've had a number of folks come to say that there's, there's possible interest in this city council vacancy, and it was pointed out to me that we haven't let people know that we have a vacancy on the city council, because our city council president was, has, um, accepted the position of interim city administrator. So, Councilor Platt will be back in March. And, but we still need one more counselor. So, um, I know that there's, uh, an applicant here in the packet. And then there, we also received an application for a second counselor that, that's interested, but it, it didn't have time to get in the packet, but you, you have it on the dais. So, um, what's the pleasure? I mean, it would sound to me to, in order, it sounds to me like it might be better for everyone if we just let everybody know we have this and give everyone a chance, I, I, to apply, that, that's interested. So, what do you all think?
Posted for applications.
Posted for applications. Well, I want to be sensitive to Mr. Mullen, who has submitted his application also, and...
Pinched hair.
Yeah, there you are. So how do you feel about that?
I think that's fine.
Okay.
Like, it's fair.
That's very gracious. Thank you. You know, we want to be fair, but in... We have this one. So Jamie, why don't we just do that advertisement? We'll agendaize it for February.
Okay.
That, again, that letter that you mailed out to the citizens has really generated some interest, and I really appreciate that happening. And I appreciate all of you interested parties coming forward. I mean, this is the most audience that we've had at our city council meeting in months. There's been talks when poor George Burke was the only one there.
It was a key word that was mentioned in that letter. What was it, Deb?
I know. Yeah.
You give people...
You do.
The word taxation.
You do, yeah. So, good job, Jamie. Good job. All right, so...
I don't want to either, Mr. Mullen.
All right, so let's move along with some committee appointments. Yay, look at this. Wow, we have some. So for planning commission, we have, let's see. We have two terms that end in January, January eleventh, 2018, and we have one term that ends in January of 2017. So one, one-year term and two, two-year terms. So for planning commission, we have applicant of Mr. Tom Mullen, Mr. Brett McKnight. Is he here today? Let me see him. Mr. Jim Ryan.
No, he's not here.
Okay, so, Mr. Mullen, would you have an interest in having comments about why you'd like to be on the planning commission or...
Well, uh...
You want to come to the microphone so everyone can hear?
Thank you all. I'm proud to be a part of Dune City. I'm building a home, or trying to build a home, starting the very lengthy process of doing so on Willhamp Lake. I believe Dune City is a slice of paradise. I think most everyone here would agree with that. And my main concern is keeping Dune City for the people. Making sure that it remains a slice of paradise. Hence, my interest in planning as well as being on the council.
Thank you. Do you have an interest, sir, in, in a preference on the longer term or the shorter term?
Would the position conflict with council position?
Mm-hmm. Yes, it would preclude you being, yes. I mean, you'd have to, if you were successful in being appointed to the council, you'd have to give up your position on the planning commission.
All right, let's do the one-year.
Okay. Okay, and since Mr. Jim, let's see, Mr. Jim Ryan isn't here...
May I say something for him? Mr. Ryan is currently active duty with the United States Air Force and is very much interested. He does have a home here, but he is currently deployed to Portland and out of Portland from time to time. I spoke to him on the phone, and we discussed the issue of whether or not he'd be available enough to serve on the planning commission. And he felt like, and the two of us both felt like, he might be better on the budget committee rather than planning, because he never knows when he's going to be heading for overseas. And he can attend budget by phone.
Oh, okay, and it's kind of a short-term...
A short-term thing, right. So I would feel comfortable in saying that he would withdraw his application for planning commission at this time, until he gets to be here full-time, all the time.
Okay, so we'll consider him for the budget. All right. So, all right, thank you, Mr. Mullen.
Thank you.
Counsel, I'll entertain a motion to appoint Mr....
We all do all yours. You have a Brett McKnight for planning, too?
Yeah. We have Tom Mullen and Brett McKnight. I mean, we get to, I mean, I suppose we could let him choose which term he wants. He would have to take a two-year term. Hold on. So I'll entertain a motion to approve both applicants, Mr. Tom Mullen and Mr. Brett McKnight, to the planning commission.
So moved, second.
It's been moved to second, that we appoint Brett McKnight and Tom Mullen to the planning commission. Any further discussion? Hearing that, I'll call for the question. All those with favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Welcome, and thank you very much for your service in advance.
Thank you.
And I know Mr. McKnight was planning to be here this evening, so something must have come up. So would you please let him know that he now has a two-year term, because he wasn't present to negotiate.
Defend him, sir.
All right, so there you go. Now, budget committee. Mr. Mullen, you agreeable to be on the budget committee?
Uh, sure.
And Mr. McKnight, would like to be on the budget committee. And Mr. Ryan, yes, on the budget committee. And so Mr. Larry Overman, budget committee with the... Very nice. So there's five openings, and we have one, two, three, four appointments. Isn't that wonderful?
It is.
Thank you. All right, so counsel, entertaining a motion to appoint Mr. Tom Mullen, Mr. Brett McKnight, Mr. Jim Ryan, and Mr. Larry Overman to the budget committee.
So moved, second.
It's been moved to second, that we appoint these gentlemen to the budget committee. Any further discussion?
Terms. We've got two that end June thirtieth of 2018, one that ends June thirtieth of 2017, and one that ends June thirtieth of 2016.
Mr. Mullen, since you're present, you may choose first choice?
2018.
2018.
Mr. Mullen, if you are chosen to serve on the city council, you automatically become a member of the budget committee. All city councillors are a member of the budget committee already.
That is my understanding. Thank you.
So then we have to have another budget person. Okay, so thank you. Any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? All right, here we go. All those with favor, motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Yay, all right, filling up these committees. Okay, so our charter says that in January, the mayor appoints committee appointments. And although I have spoke with some of you councillors regarding your current appointment to your committees, I would like to table this unfinished... Well, I'm skipping ahead. No, no, no. I would like to table item H, committee chair appointments to the goal planning session agenda. Ms. Mills?
That's fine, but they've all expired, so you need to say something about covering it until your appointments are made.
Okay, so are you all in agreement to cover your current assignments and tell other management? Counsel Meyer?
Yes.
Counsel Wells?
Yeah.
Counsel Sanders?
Yeah.
Thank you. Counsel Scarborough?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. And, you know, my comments, the reason for doing this, is because I feel that it's time that we try to consolidate, or at least take a look at consolidating some of our committees. Because we are, for the, for two years now, we've had a real issue with getting volunteers to be, to fulfill the obligations of the committee. And so it may be time that we can combine some, or, you know, I don't know. So that's why I'm doing that, and thank you for your indulgence in that. So we'll try to get this done in February. Any comments or questions?
I have a question. I have another application here for someone that wanted to be on city council, planning commission, and budget committee. That was on the dais here.
Okay, so that's what we spoke about. Mr. Pezna?
Yes.
Mr. Pezna, yes. So we just got this one.
Yes.
And so as we discussed earlier, we will wait and advertise and then discuss them all, because you, we haven't had a chance to look at it.
Right.
It was like laying here.
Right.
So, yeah.
So maybe I have.
Something that...
I have.
Right. Oh, no. Oh, no. We're keeping it. No backing down. Here it is. We got it in our hand. All right.
Mayor Reedy?
Yes.
Do you want me to put this, consideration of this appointment on the next?
Absolutely, yes. Yes. And hopefully, we're going to get them all together. I mean, why don't we make sure we say in the ad or the advertisement or the press release or whatever that we need to have their application before these packets get done, so everyone can have fair consideration.
Okay.
So you pick the date, whatever that is. We are now moving to unfinished old business, agenda item number nine, 2016 Oregon Dunes Triathlon. So we have, let's see, we received our sponsorship packet before.
We're giving you more, because the more sponsorships we get, the better the situation.
Do we have confirmation, Ms. Mills, from any sponsors to date?
We have not received the funding yet, but I am assured that it's coming shortly. That Three Rivers Casino has agreed to be a major sponsor for the event.
Oh.
At the $4,000 level.
Jack, that's a press, no, what do you call that? A scoop. That's a scoop. There you go. We have a major sponsor.
We have a major sponsor, and we're thrilled about that, so...
We are thrilled, so thank you to the casino for being our, one of our major sponsors for this event. Our fourth year. Can you believe the time has gone?
The item is on the agenda with regard to the T-shirts, because we have some leftover T-shirts. And...
Oh.
Administrative Assistant Linda Stevens suggested that, since KCST every once in a while has drawings and gives things away, that maybe we provide those T-shirts to KCST for giveaways in the future, as kind of a PR thing.
Okay. I think that if you're, I think it would, in all fairness, we should ask the local newspaper if they're interested in doing it. I may have rules or something against it, but there's no rule against it, so let's give them some, too. All right, okay. Anybody else we can think of?
What's that?
Is there anyone else we can think of that might?
I want the boys and girls, for, for the kids, I mean.
You might, you might think of SOS.
SOS? There you go. Okay, so promotion, you know, promotion is good. So when we go around to the different cities and make challenges, oh. We'll take them a T-shirt.
There you go.
There you go. So I have, all right.
Mayor.
Yes. Counsel Sanders?
Does Science Law High School have a varsity cross-country team?
Yes, they do.
Why not give the varsity team T-shirts?
You know, that's something that we've discussed with their coach in previous years, and the prop, they're, we, because we've asked them, "Please come and be part of this." Well, they have a big district meet or some kind of a big meet.
State meet is that weekend.
Friday.
Every year.
Friday. They have that big old meet, and so that kind of like, they're, they're sleeping.
The next year, they don't have it, and they might have a high school that want to purchase it.
Well, there is a smart man thinking. All right.
But I think Counsel Sanders was saying, just give, I mean, we have these leftover T-shirts, and we've got tons of them. So we could, what greater advertising than have kids wearing them when they're racing?
Exactly. Yeah, I like that. All right. Do what you feel is, is...
All right, thank you.
Good. Anything else about that? I mean...
Need sponsorships, guys?
Yep, we do. All right. Comprehensive plan update.
I'm going to suggest that this item be moved to the goal-setting session and discussed at that time. As a preamble to that, I've had discussions with Rapunzel, and I honestly believe that this item could be conducted and done in-house and not have to be contracted out. So I want to discuss that, you know.
Okay.
I want you guys to discuss that and see what you think.
All right. So you're going to agendaize that on the goal session?
I will make a note that that's something that needs to be discussed with the goal-setting session. I still need to get together with you on the agenda.
Okay, all right. Does any councillor wish to have an eight o'clock break, even though it's eight o'clock? Yes. I'm looking for hands, because we could just bust this out.
I can do that.
Okay, all right. Reimbursement, we're moving on to unfinished business, C, reimbursement of funds from Lakes to Edge. Do you want to give us a preamble on that, Ms. Mills?
What I was, can say is that we have reached resolution, we have reached a resolution that is satisfactory to all parties. I anticipate the city being reimbursed in the very near future.
Okay, so a resolution on that. All right.
Reimbursement for everything.
For everything. So any further discussion, councillors, on that? Hearing that, we'll move to reports. Okay. My report this evening, I'm, I don't know if you all saw in the paper that our US Senator Ron Wyden had a coastal community outreach meeting at the high school last week, and so I attended that, and I challenged his staff and he, challenged him and his staff to give us a team in the Oregon Dunes Triathlon, and he said, "Yes, he would." So we, yep, couldn't resist it. So I used actually Jamie's time a lot, because when you have a big group like that, they give you tickets and they draw your ticket. If your ticket doesn't get drawn, you don't get to comment or ask a question. But in any case, June, who is the assistant, said, "Just get her the details," and she'd be happy to get a team together.
Will the senator be out there running or something?
You never know. He's quite fit. So, so just thought I'd let you all know that. There's an announcement that everyone's invited to at Florence and Dune City Community Forum, five to eight p.m. on Thursday, January twenty-eighth, at the Ford Event Center. And this is the Pathways Community Forum. It's, you know, conducted by the Ford Foundation. And they've actually spent a year or more gathering information about vision and action, and here's a little flyer about that, so everyone's welcome to attend on that. And finally, in my report this evening, I just want to report, you know, I'm very saddened by the... you know, I'm very saddened by the passing of longtime resident Bob Jackson recently. And, you know, he lived in, he was born in Westlake and, you know, we're just all sad by that. We've had some really good times with him and boy, we actually, a few years ago, interviewed him and asked him questions about, you know, the history of Westlake and Dune City and he, we have that on audio tape, so, you know, with intentions of perhaps one day it be of some historical significance to us. So, you know, our condolences go out to the family and I understand that there's no date set for remembrance or anything, so. That's it. Um, communications vacant, ordinance refused. Counselor Wells, you have a report this evening?
Well, I got a phone call that we had a little flooding at City Hall and I was unavailable to get down here and staff took care of it themselves. I'm not exactly sure what went on then, but.
Actually, my husband took care of it with staff. Rapunzel took care of the front
Okay.
and Robin and I were out cleaning out the drains in the back. So now you know why I don't always dress up.
I did get on the spot for that one and we had the wind event, bit the bolt on the flagstaff and it was, had about a five degree less to it and we got that fixed.
Wow.
Yeah. So that was a big deal right there. That was, our committee was hard at work.
Wow. No action on Counselor Platt's committee, right? No. Counselor Scarborough?
We didn't have a meeting. I sent an email out saying if anyone has any agenda ideas next week. We may not have that meeting because if we don't have any business conflict, there's no reason to have a meeting. So at this point, it's if if we'll have a meeting next week.
Oh.
And then on another topic, David Jackson contacted me about the portage. We made a long discussion on that. He said he would be willing to talk to some people that might want to sponsor it. You know, we talked before about maybe some different agencies sponsoring that to get it out from under our control. And so I told him I'd bring him out to this meeting, but I felt that the council would have no problem with him because it's kind of associated with his business and so he talks to those people that use kayaks and canoes. So he, he's got a couple of ideas and people would make contact to see if they want to take over responsibility of that portage for the next however many years the state wants it contracted for.
Wow. Did he happen to indicate whether or not it was an organized organization or, okay, well, that's possible. Awesome.
So I'll call him back and tell him if he had what he, what he can do to help us out.
Maybe he could come give us a presentation or write us a letter or let us know what's going on.
Yeah, he'll keep in contact and let us know what happens if he does sponsor it. He, he's got some different theories out there that he mentioned that they can contact.
Oh, okay, wow. Great. Anything else, Counselor?
That's it.
Counselor Sanders?
The Road Commission did not meet. We did not have a forum. I was there. There was no forum. Other than that, you pretty much know where we're at. The upcoming meeting, we're gonna talk about road maintenance projects for this year. And we, other items that we've already talked about.
Oh, okay.
Some improvements.
Done.
I need to deal.
Alright. Counselor Meyer?
Water quality is still good and we've got more than we've had.
Yes, we do. A little more.
And the water quality committee meeting is scheduled for the 17th of February, three in the afternoon. Complete report for you in March, I guess.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Mills, almost said Counselor Mills. Ms. Mills, do you have a report for emergency services report?
Yes, thank you. I attended the Westlake Emergency Operations Group meeting on December 21st and the minutes are in your packets for your review, as are the financial reports and the reports by Chief Langburg. And I believe Megan provided a report as well. Megan Mesmer, she's the chairman, I believe that's also in there, but it'll be in the minutes. Some of you who have signed up for the emergency notifications may have suddenly realized that your messages are coming in fast and furious. Well, it's because we love changed vendors. And so if you want to kind of reduce that because you really don't care what happens in Bend, or maybe you do, you've got relatives, I don't know. Anyway, there, you can go to the Florence, City of Florence website and there's a place where you can go in and identify your options and you notify the vendor of what your options are and they will narrow that down so you're not being inundated with 500 million emergency alerts a day. See, and the next regular meeting will be on January 25th at 10 a.m.
Jamie, Jamie, I have a question for you. Is that the SENS network that you were talking about? The S-C-E-N?
Yes, the one that, the SENS, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's what you're talking about?
Where you signed up and said, please notify me in emergency?
Yeah.
They have a new vendor and she didn't give the vendor any specific limitations. And so in order to get those limitations, you go in and you tell them what you want to know about and what you don't want to know. Next meeting will be January 25th at 10 a.m. where we will be discussing in detail the emergency operations plan. We're getting down to the nuts and bolts about ready to start adopting the, the emergency operations. We've been working on it last year.
I know, yeah.
And that's it for that report. Are you ready for the city administrative report?
Yes.
Alright. Permit activity was fairly active. We had ten permits that included one structural, five mechanical, one plumbing and two electrical. And as is the case every month, expiring permit holders were contacted to update their permits and copies of the permits were sent to Lane County and Lane Council governments to continue on schedule. Planning Commission did not meet in December and it was hoped that there will be appointments tonight so that they will have a forum so that they can move forward on their work on Chapter 155. We have finally received a copy of the recorded deed conveying any interest in Lot 700 or the Playground Lot to Lane County. I also followed up with Jeff Turk at Lane County regarding the dedication of the roadways in Silk, Silkus Heights that were previously private roadways. And he indicated that the county is uncertain as to whether it wants to provide surveyed descriptions as requested. Now, since then, as you know, we had some heavy-duty rains and there is definitely a problem with drainage on North Pioneer Road in the private area. It flooded out two properties. And so we may want to rethink that. If they suddenly come up and say, yes, let's do this, well, we want, may want to make sure that that gets addressed because we had several engineers go out and look at it and they all seem to think it was, it never happened before and I know it was a ton of rain that we're not used to having, but the way they designed, the county designed Clear Lake Road when they widened it, they moved the culvert, it used to go down the drains on both sides, the ditches on both sides. They placed a culvert on the one, on the north side of the road and it's gathering all the water there and sending it down North Pioneer Road which has a ditch that goes to somebody's driveway and then stops. And then it just flows everywhere. And so that's what the problem was. But that may be something to consider, you know, if they want to say, well, you know, we'll take all the road, all the other roads, but not North Pioneer unless you fix the drainage issues first.
Well, don't, shouldn't they fix it anyways?
Well, we're working on it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm working on that.
Alright.
Since I did not receive timely responses or requests for estimates on the encroachment issue, I asked our city attorney to work on it. She contacted the property owner's attorney in December, who in turn agreed to contact his clients. He contacted his clients and his clients now contacted us and requested not to deal with the attorney and that they will be back in the area soon and we can, and actually, I have emailed her. I have her back on response for the mayor and I to get together and, and discuss it with her. Oh, I included the council's recommendations and discussions from the last session regarding the Oregon Dunes Triathlon sales agreement, but I haven't received anything back from her yet, other than she had some questions. We discussed it. Yes, all councils need to get out there and get sponsorships. A draft Eastman agreement for the Wolling Lake Outlet Control Structure is also before the attorney now and I'm awaiting that information back from, or the reviewed and final documents back from her. And finally, well, not exactly, there's a few extras. Roadways, drains, culverts and ditches have caused some flooding problems throughout the area and erosion concerns over the last two months. It became necessary for the city to enter into an emergency lease agreement due to drain and culvert cleaning and restoration in order to stop the continued flooding of a particular resident on Keechley Arm Road. We also installed wattle to divert the heavy flows that were washing out the foundation under the person, the individual's storage shed on his property. I want to thank Richard Palmer, Renee Green and Robin Mills for their help in averting the damaging water flows. And I request that this item be discussed at the goal-setting session as well. And we did have our best practices meeting with the insurance representatives on Monday. There are, we got deemed on our volunteer process. That's why tonight, before you, we have a volunteer registration and waiver form that all volunteers are going to be required to sign. I have prepared such forms for every single committee, for the, for the committee members and for the commission and the planning commission. There are a number of other forms that go with that, but we've done pretty good on that. It's just we haven't had the waiver forms.
Have they had this in existence before?
It has been requested in prior meetings, yes. In prior years.
Oh.
And by deemed, all I mean is the premiums are a little bit higher. The more we comply with these things, they, it decreases the premiums. That's why we ended up with the, the escape rail on the walls and that kind of thing. And lo and behold, we have settlement on the franchise issue. I will be having a teleconference with Kristi Monson, our attorney, next week to settle or begin finalizing the actual hard document to settle the charter communication franchise issue.
Yes, we have a lot of control of that.
I've been baking cake.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Mills. Any questions or comments?
What about cake?
Cake?
No.
I don't cake.
I'm cake. Septic maintenance update.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I think that's cake.
I thought she was saying cake.
All of a sudden, all of a sudden heard me say, yay, I finished the first page. So the first page, which I guess is about eighty-five odd people, is completely in compliance. Yay, and I'm working on to the next. There's only a few on each page, so we are under eighty now
Wow.
that have not complied.
Wow. Anything else?
No, ma'am, thank you.
Okay. We're done. Okay, alright. We're good to order?
I have something.
Okay.
It has to do with the rain events on the Fourth of December. We all seen it was an old-fashioned rain event. They had brought up some ugly things that we used to have. I think the last time I remember it being that high that I seen it was the rain of ninety-five, ninety-six. And I knew that because a friend of mine owned our doors and the vine was out there. I went out and seen the damage that was done at that particular property during this storm and it was very impressive, the amount of damage that was done there.
Wow.
My whole point of this, and it wasn't just that, I also got phone calls from people that live on Wolling Lake, which obviously has nothing to do with the dam or anything else, but there was so much rain came down that folks who had lived their, their whole life had never seen their docks affected so adversely from this rain. I don't know what we can do about that. The Silkus Lake one is a little bit different and then I would, I would like to see the city be a little more proactive and come fall time on monitoring, you know, what we can do. We don't control that dam, I know that. But get some phone calls in and keep them using that lake as a flood control device in the, in the fall months, you know, September, October. So when we have these rains in December, you know, January, February, we have a little bit of control there because.
Well, I thought the, the forts were all out.
Well.
Not, not initially.
Huh?
Yeah, no.
They're out of the weir.
That's what it meant?
Yeah, no.
That's a wrong name.
Out of Silkus, out of Silkus.
Oh, oh, okay. The dam.
Yeah. And it wasn't just one. I've managed, I've always put it out there that I'd like people to get a hold of me on issues and I've heard from several folks on this, several in, in Silkus Lake that had damage done and also a couple on Wolling, which, you know, there's not a lot we can do about Wolling, you know, it is what it is. But it was a lot of water, but I know we don't control the dam on Silkus, but, you know, we are a city and as a city, we can put the word out to the folks that are running that dam to keep aware that, you know, damage is done when the water gets as high as it gets here. And there are some numbers, but I don't think there's a time to go into that right now.
Right. What would you like to see done with this information, Counselor?
I would just, when next fall comes around, it's too late for this year. It is what it is. But, you know, a little more control, a little bit of Dune City, you know, making a phone call from staff to the folks that run that dam down there, let them know, heads up, you know, it's coming into fall. Can we keep the water level where it needs to be for, for flood in the event of heavy rain like that? Do what we can do to help this kind of damage from happening again, you know, best that we can, at least put an effort out to help.
Very good point. Ms. Mills?
The other thing, and it went hand in hand with that, is we at City Hall receive a lot of calls wanting to know if the dam is open for the salmon runs. And so beginning about the time, you know, I guess it would be October when people are looking for the salmon runs, we call the dam virtually every day, at least once a week, to see if it's open, to see if they open it. And, well, this year, she, there was no water. I mean, the dam was open, but, but earlier in the year, there was no water going over because the water was so low. When it did start coming in, I think they may have been caught a little off guard, but I know from that first day, I called, I've got them open as wide as I can. And we were receiving calls here at City Hall regarding Wolling too, saying, well, there must be a tree in, in the outlet control structure in the weir or not. And so we said, well, thanks, thanks to Sheldon and for going out there and checking to make sure that, no, the outlet control structure was not blocked. It was just that much water. So I know, I sympathize with the dam in that you can't predict what's going to be coming down, but it seemed like they could have opened it a little bit sooner than they did, but they were afraid to because it was so dry. And then all of a sudden, you know, so. But we do, we do call frequently and perhaps what we need is the measurement device that we've talked about. If we had that measurement device installed, and so that might be a real good thing to talk about at the goal-setting session.
I'll bring it up.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor.
One of the problems, you have two in a big rain event, is if it coincides with high tides, the tides are washing water up Silkus Outlet. And so that prevents all the water upstream. I've been out there when it's happening. You've got, you've got water for a couple hundred yards going up the outlet. So if you've got a lot of water coming down and it's high tide, a lot of wave action, that backs the water all the way up to Wolling Lake. I don't know how many cubic feet per minute flows when the dam is completely open, but it should control the water if you don't have the, the high tide at the same time.
Yeah, that was a lot of water. Anything else, Counselor? Nope, good. Would you, Counselor Sanders?
Couple of things. In regards to Bob Jackson, I was fortunate enough to interview him. And the recording that was made, that the transcript, I think, is in the time capsule.
The original?
No, I think the drive is.
Yes, the recording is.
Yeah. But I think it might be something that maybe the Science Law News might have interest in in hearing his own words as if he was still with us and maybe doing something with it because he had some really cute clips in there.
I would suggest calling Jenna.
Hilarious stories, too.
Yeah, it was, I, I feel honored that I've had that opportunity to meet the man and talk to him about that. I feel honored that I've had that opportunity to meet the man and talk to him about that. We lost Jenna. Secondly, I'm undergoing a lot of personal issues in my life. I am now providing caregiving services to my 90-year-old mother. I've also been appointed as the trustee of the family trust, that requires me to have, you know, take care of assets in California, and a few other things, so I want to make it clear, as much as I've been doing my tenure here on this council, I'm not going to be seeking reelection. So we need to make plans for transition on the road commission. Just want to put that out there.
Thank you for letting us know that, Counselor. We'll respect your wishes. Counselor Scarborough? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn, it is 8:30. Boo! 8:30.